Okay, I would like to call to order the Amberly Village Council Meeting of April 13, 2020. Please call the roll.
Richard Bardak.
Here.
Peg Conway.
Here.
Ed Hattonback.
Here.
Alita Kaymine.
Here.
Tom Muthing.
Here.
Ray Warren.
Here.
Natalie Wolf.
Here.
Scott Larmer.
Here.
Kevin McDonough.
Here.
Keith Wallace.
Here.
Rick K.
Here.
And I know we'll lose the camera, but if everyone could please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag, the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice. Okay, for those watching tonight's council meeting, welcome. And, you know, normally, holding a meeting remotely like this is not allowed under the Ohio Open Meetings Law. Because of the crisis we're in right now, the Attorney General of the State of Ohio specifically had a ruling that allows this. But the one proviso is that it must be done in the light of day, and that's why we're live streaming the meeting the way we are. But as soon as things return to normal, we will return to meetings as normal, and meetings like this would no longer be allowed. And then the other thing I want to mention, that for all council members, kind of the way we're going to do things tonight is, whereas normally if we had a resolution, we would just do a voice vote, and for ordinances, we do a roll call vote. We will be doing roll call votes for all, just to make sure that Tammy is able to record the votes, and that also, if people could use the raise a hand, which I'm trying to, yeah, if they could use the raise a hand if they have a question as we get through things, and I'll be able to recognize people with the raised hand. First item on our agenda is the minutes of our last meeting. There was one change and one editorial fix that Tammy made. Are there any further changes to those? The minutes were circulated earlier today. Seeing no comments, we can consider the minutes approved. We'll now move on to the finance report for February 2020.
Excuse me.
Yes.
I have to log in on my Zoom account and not the Amberly Zoom account. Consequently, I don't have the hands raised or hands lowered icon, so.
Okay, well.
Just to make you aware, if I do have, you know, if I'd like to say something, I will raise my hand.
Or just, because I may not see that, just speak.
Okay.
We'll accept that at times we might be speaking over somebody in that case.
Okay.
Okay, Scott.
I'm reporting on the finances for the village for the month of February, talking about the general fund. The UAN report was included in your packet, but a summary of that information as well I'll share with you this evening. The earnings tax collections for the month of February totaled $124,000. That was about $124,000. To February of 2019's collection of $110,000. So the earnings tax collections for 2020 is at $3 million. So far, as of the end of February, we have collected $416,000. The village did receive property tax advance of $450,000 that went into our general fund. The village also received $6200 for the local government fund, funds that come from the through the month of February, total $150,000. So our total revenue to date for the village's general fund is just a little over $1 million. And our revenue estimate for the year is $5.6 million, so we've collected almost 18% of the revenues for the year as of the end of February. On the expense side, the village expenses for the month of February totaled $381,000. So year-to-date, we've spent $805,000. That is of a $5.6 million general fund budget, so we spent about 14% of the general fund budget. And this leaves a balance of $4.9 million unencumbered general fund balance for the village. And that concludes my report.
Are there any questions for the manager? Seeing no questions, we'll move on to the next item, and the next item is Colin Driscoll is going to address the council. Colin, are you there?
Yes. I'm here.
So Colin, if you can just state, you know, just as normal, state your name and address.
Yeah.
And one thing, what you wrote in said you wanted to address a proposal from the Shriners. I assume what you're talking about is the proposal that we're working with the Masons, not the Shriner.
Oh, sorry. Correct, correct.
Okay.
Okay, sorry about that. Okay, Colin Driscoll, I'm a 6,600 Ridge, 32-year resident, we're collecting the council for hosting this virtual council meeting amid this COVID-19 pandemic. When I attended this Mason's presentation, I was struck by the fact that its genesis began in March of 2019, yet this was the first time I was hearing about it. The mayor had indicated to me that he viewed the clubhouse parcel as the single most valuable piece on the Green to business. If we are considering the disposing of this parcel, I'd like to see the village advertised into a market listing per 3901 disposition of property. A market listing would help us ascertain what other enterprises be interested in the property. We need to do this as a way of measuring the Shriners' value proposition to the village. I feel we need something that will generate potential revenue for a multimillion-dollar investment. Secondly, upon reviewing the materials from our 11th council meeting, I was struck by the Compensation and Benefits Committee report on ordinance 2020-5, fixing compensation for village employees and declaring an emergency. First, I see my across-the-board pay rate, 3%, raises to the level of an emergency. And secondly, as I recall from attending Compensation and Benefits Committee meeting years ago, the tiering of longevity pay was a way to try to bring future costs under control, and at that time was by design. At that time, longevity pay was designed to disappear at a time as a village expense and as a way of helping to control future costs. Minutes in that last meeting state, Compensation and Benefits Committee had a few options to consider regarding longevity pay. Eliminating it was equivalent to a pay cut. That's a quote. And my comment is, since when is something you are not entitled to a pay cut? In my view, the reinstatement of longevity pay is a failure to manage employee expectations over time. If the village's financial situation has any similarities with Cincinnati, for example, as we encounter in COVID-19 future, we should never have passed this as an emergency measure, in my opinion. We should have followed proper protocol and had three readings of the proposed ordinance prior to its passage. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions? Okay, Colin, thanks for your comment.
Tom.
Ray, you have a question?
Yeah, I've got some comments. I wanted to add to some things that Colin shared.
Okay, go ahead.
First of all, I want to thank Mr. Driscoll for attending our online meeting. This will be a first, I probably have a few. And I also want to thank the village employees who provide excellent service to our residents and businesses. This is a feature that we, as residents, market to others, and I'm sure our village manager promotes the prospective businesses and residents. But what I need to do now is apologize to the residents. Last month, I voted to eliminate three readings of an ordinance that would create new compensation benefits, specifically longevity pay. This was not an emergency, and in fact, the Compensation Committee that discussed this new and/or restored benefit, there was no notice of this new measure for that committee meeting. So net residents and myself were blindsided with this new benefit. About eight years ago, after the Great Recession, the Compensation Benefits Committee, as well as other committees, and the village manager sought ways to make the village more financially sound and stable. As chair of the committee, we ended up introducing three measures which we felt would make the village more financially responsible. These included reforming longevity pay and sick day policies. I'm not going to go through the new sick day policies, but suffice it to say, we introduced two important measures. The cashing out of sick days would, with some exception, be restricted with retirement age as opposed to any time, and the accumulation of sick days would be reduced for new hires. This will be consistent with other public employment practices. With regard to longevity pay, we recognize this measure was far removed from what goes on in the business world. To be clear, we're a kind of a business. We provide great services to residents and businesses in return for payment, what we call taxes. Longevity pay in the village was determined by years of service. At five-year intervals, the amount would increase from a minimum of $500 per year to $1,250 per year by year 20. So on top of whatever council decided and voted on should be an annual pay adjustment based on performance and what we can afford, this longevity pay would be in addition. It could amount to 1% to 2% additional salary plus additional benefit cost to the village. This continues year after year. It's not a way to run a business. The other data we had was that about 12 of the 25 municipalities had longevity pay, many of which were utilized employees, so adjustments couldn't be easily made. And when we compared our longevity pay benefit to these 12 others, it was about double. We had several options to consider. One was to simply eliminate longevity pay and have annual pay adjustments strictly related to poor performance, competitive forces, and finances. To be frank, this would make most sense, but this would be tantamount to a pay cut. We could establish bonus pay, but the employees were not in favor of that. A bird in the hand or guarantee pay is worth two in a bush. So we decided to leave longevity pay in place for existing employees and eliminate it for new hires. In other words, to create a sunset provision that would eventually save the village about $40,000 plus benefits. Would this result in differential benefit between new hires and senior employees? Yes, of course, but it would take us to a more secure financial situation, consistent with best business practices. So when I attended last month's council meeting, I was frankly shocked that longevity pay was being reinstituted. And of course, almost the next day, the stock market took a dive, and we are now in a worse recession than 10 years ago. Our revenues are and will be going down, and God only knows when we'll be getting out of this recovery, when there'll be a recovery. And certainly, other people outside the village are going to have lost their jobs, and work is reduced with reduced pay. But here, we're giving a new benefit without residents being aware. Our fiscal house is unstable. It was a mistake under normal financial times to reinstitute this policy, and it's a blunder looking at it a month later. I would ask council and at a minimum, the Compensation Committee to review this. Thanks so much.
Are there any comments from other council members? Okay, we'll now move on to the committee reports, and first, the Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mayor. The first item I have is the addition dealing with the distribution of local government funds. The Local Government Fund is a revenue-sharing arrangement between the state and local governments. The state has decreased the local government share by 25% in 2012, an additional 25% in 2013. During the last three years, the voters received $59,000, $60,000, and $64,000 from the Local Government Fund. The proposed formula for the distribution of local government monies which derive from states, sales, franchise, and income tax, I didn't know they still have franchise tax, to the various jurisdictions as follows: 40.75% to Hamilton County, 40.75% to the City of Cincinnati, and 1% to the Park District. The balance of the funds are equally distributed through remaining jurisdictions based upon populations and valuation of land values maintained. This is a renewal of an existing distribution formula from eight years ago, and we're asked to redo this by the county. Accordingly, I move to adopt Resolution Number 2020-13, a resolution authorizing the adoption of an alternative method of proportioning the Local Government Fund.
Second.
Okay, it has been moved in second that we adopt Resolution 2020-13, which basically continues, recommends that we continue with the alternative method of portioning the Local Government Fund. Are there any questions or comments?
No.
Okay, seeing none, it has been moved in second that we adopt Resolution 2020-13. Please call the roll.
Richard Bardak.
Yes.
Peg Conway.
Yes.
Ed Hattonback.
Yes.
Alita Kaymine.
Yes.
Tom Muthing.
Yes.
Ray Warren.
Yes.
Natalie Wolf.
Yeah.
The next item we have is dealing with the cell tower lease extension. This was negotiated actually back in the last year, and we have now ironed out all the bugs within this agreement. Accordingly, we need to bolster the relative flow of income from the cell tower lease for an additional 20 years. Original lease was a good lease, and now we want to carry it on another 20 years, and we have budgeted for the increase in revenues from those lease agreements. Accordingly, I wish to introduce Ordinance Number 2020-9, an ordinance authorizing and directing the village manager to negotiate, execute the First Amendment to the lease to the lease agreement, excuse me, for lease of a portion of real property declaring an emergency.
Ed, because of the timing on all this, again, we should, the process should be waiving the three readings first. That should be your first ordinance.
Okay. I move that we waive the three readings of Ordinance Number 2020-9, the ordinance authorizing and directing the village manager to negotiate and execute the lease for the cell towers.
Second.
Okay, it has been moved in second that we waive the three readings with respect to Ordinance 2020-9, which authorizes the village manager to enter into the extension on the cell tower lease. Are there any questions or comments on that? Seeing none, it has been moved in second that we waive the three readings on Ordinance 2020-9. Please call the roll.
Richard Bardak.
Yes.
Peg Conway.
Yes.
Ed Hattonback.
Yes.
Alita Kaymine.
Yes.
Tom Muthing.
Yes.
Ray Warren.
Yes.
Natalie Wolf.
Yes.
Now I move that we adopt Ordinance Number 2020-9, the ordinance authorizing and directing the village manager to negotiate and execute the First Amendment to lease agreement for lease of a portion of real estate property.
A second. Okay, it has been moved in second that we adopt Ordinance 2020-9, which authorizes the village manager to extend our existing cell tower lease. Are there any questions or comments?
I'd like to make a comment.
Go ahead.
I just think it's worth pointing out that the original agreement was very good. We had specialized counsel involved in reviewing it, and it was, he had never seen anything quite like it, so there wasn't a whole lot of improvement to make, so it's a good thing.
And although we get $130,000 additional dollars.
Right, right, so way to go, Scott.
Ray, you also had a question or comment?
Yeah, I had a question. I guess this is either to Ed or Scott. So when I look at this new agreement, is there an annual escalator, or does it go up every five years? Is it each, like a five-year term and then increase, or is it an annual increase? I was unclear about that.
Scott.
It is an increase every five years. So the rent increases every five years, as do the colo fees increase every year as well. So everything is geared around that kind of an increase.
But they increase at a rate of 20%, so a very favorable rate, every five years.
And I'd certainly like to thank, you know, the Finance Committee and Scott for really, you know, doing a great job on this. This is really terrific. Thanks.
Just for your information prior to this, the escalation rate was 15%, so.
So does this mean our phone bills are going up?
For you, yes.
Okay, it has been moved in second that we adopt Ordinance 2020-9. Please call the roll.
Richard Bardak.
Yes.
Peg Conway.
Yes.
Ed Hattonback.
Yes.
Alita Kaymine.
Yes.
Tom Muthing.
Yes.
Ray Warren.
Yes.
Natalie Wolf.
Yeah.
Section four of those ordinance is hereby declared to be an emergency measure for immediate preservation of public peace, health, and safety, and general welfare, and should be effective immediately upon its passage.
Second, oh, sorry. Second.
Okay, it has been moved in second that we adopt Ordinance 2020-9 as an emergency measure, which will allow to go into effect on its regular schedule, which we benefit from because that will allow the increases to go as they normally would. Are there any questions or comments? If not, it has been moved in second that we adopt Ordinance 2020-9 as an emergency measure. Please call the roll.
Richard Bardak.
Yes.
Peg Conway.
Yes.
Ed Hattonback.
Yes.
Alita Kaymine.
Yes.
Tom Muthing.
Yes.
Ray Warren.
Yes.
Natalie Wolf.
Yeah.
That concludes my report. Thank you.
Okay, we'll now move on to the Law Committee.
This will be the first reading of Ordinance 2020-6, amending various sections in the village zoning code, also the first reading of Ordinance 2020-7, amending the general regulations of the municipal code of ordinances, and the first reading of Ordinance 2020-8, amending the property maintenance code. As stated in our code, the purpose of the exterior property maintenance code is to protect the public health, safety, and general welfare of the village. The purpose goes further with its ability to conserve and promote the value of properties, improve aesthetic aspects of all structures, whether residential or non-residential, provide protection against public nuisances, enhance property values and quality of living, keep crime down, instill a sense of pride in our community which adds to our distinctiveness, encourages investment in property which complements our higher quality of life, brings pride and encourages interaction between neighbors, protects public convenience, comfort, and prosperity, and forces the character of properties within the village. Terms of history of this process, in the fall of 2018, the Law Committee began discussions about various changes to our property maintenance code. The changes stem from resident complaints, questions, lack of clarity in code, and how to approve certain requests, and the need to bring sections of the village code up to date. Deliberations on the amendments have sued, however, our progress was sidetracked by the necessity of dealing with the Accessory Use Code. While this necessitated several months of meetings between the Law Committee, Planning Committee, and Village Council, the attention to the property maintenance code was placed on hold. Consequently, a change in the law director added further delay. In the fall of 2019, the property maintenance code changes resurfaced for the Law Committee. Once other property maintenance code modifications affected the zoning code, therefore, it was referred to the Planning Commission on March 11 by Village Council with Resolution 2020-12. Planning Commission held a public hearing, reviewed the proposed ordinance on April 6, and made the recommendations that council adopt Ordinance 2020-6 with one modification. In Section 154-14, where barbed wire, farm fencing, or razor wire are proposed as prohibited fencing materials, Planning Commission added chain link fencing to that category. Since the village does not want to encourage fences to preserve our vistas, Planning Commission's perspective was fencing should be aesthetically pleasing, and chain link fences have a similar feel as the ones that were being barred, such as barbed wire, farm fencing, and razor wire, and therefore proposed chain link fencing for elimination. The consensus was that while chain link is long-lasting, it tends to rust and discolor. The advantages of chain link are its affordability, low maintenance, but it's also good at keeping kids and pets contained. I had an issue with barring chain link fence because I probably have the largest chain link fence in my area of the village, so I thought it was a little disingenuous for me to want to ban chain link fence when I have a gigantic chain link fence in my backyard. So on to the ordinances. Ordinance 2020-6 regarding first subsection 154-14 regarding fences, walls, and hedges. The proposed changes to Section 154.141 are to not allow residential fencing to be constructed of barbed wire, farm fencing, razor wire, with the addition of chain link, and stipulate that the finished side of the fence must face the adjacent properties. These changes stem from requests from residents to use these types of materials and the belief that these should not be allowed on residential properties. The proposed changes to Section 154.142 are to allow vegetable and fruit garden fencing to be a maximum of six feet in height, but must be see-through green or black material and restrict the garden to 400 square feet in size. Subsection 154.54D4 regarding chickens, the proposed changes to this section are to allow the fencing around chicken coops to be constructed up to six feet in height. This change stems from concerns that the code requires chickens to be protected from predators, and the coop is to be regularly maintained, but the four-and-a-half-foot height fence does not prevent predators from entering the area and is too low to maintain the coop. Since Ordinance 2020-6, the fence affects our zoning code, it's necessary to have a public hearing on these changes. This can be scheduled for May 11. Two additional pieces of legislation pertaining to the property maintenance code did not affect the zoning code, therefore, the ordinances did not require the Planning Commission's review, nor did they require a public hearing. Those changes were reviewed by the Law Committee and are as follows. Ordinance 2020-7, subsection 98.02, fencing of pools required. The proposed change to Section 98.02 is to increase the minimum fence height around the pools to four-and-a-half feet in height. This increase in height is for the safety purposes and to be consistent with the village zoning code and Hamilton County building regulations. The proposed changes to Section 98.01 regarding pools is to prohibit above-ground pools, but grandfather existing above-ground pools until which time they are removed. The proposed change stems from years of residential complaints that the village allows above-ground Regarding Section 92.01, adoption of the Ohio Fire Code, Unified Hamilton County Fire Code is no longer used in the county, the proposed change to Section 92.01 is to repeal the existing fire code and to adopt the State of Ohio Fire Code. On to Ordinance 2020-8, subsection 159.172 regarding toys, recreation, and sports equipment and furniture, the proposed change- The proposed change to this section is furniture in the front yard must be in good repair and not allow it to be located in the street right of way. Regarding subsection 159 point 191 protective treatment, the proposed changes to this section would allow, would add the requirement that any surface found to have algae, mold and light growth be cleaned and maintained free from growth. Section 159 point 164 regarding weed, weeds and firewood piles. The proposed change to this section would require firewood to be neatly stacked and prohibit the firewood from being located in the front yard. Section 159 point 063 regarding penalties, the proposed change to this section is to correct the language to read, for each offense including the third and thereafter violation of the chapter in any calendar year, the property owner may be cited and fined 150 dollars as a repeat offender. Section 159 point 161 regarding grading and drainage. Uh, this section, the added section C to restrict all work related to replacement of a residential sanitary line for a six month period, including restoration of the soil and grass, so as not to create a blight or prevent erosion. Essentially, this gave a property owner six months to complete all restoration of the ground on a residential sanitary line. And after council holds the first reading of ordinance 2020-6, 2020-7 and 2020-8, council should set a public hearing on May 11th or any other day council deems appropriate. Order 2020-6. The remaining two ordinances, ordinance 2020-7 and 2020-8 do not require public hearings. However, village council may want to have an opportunity for the public to speak, but all three proposed ordinances. On May 11th, after the required public hearing for ordinance 2020-6 and discussion about all three ordinances, village council has the option to amend and/or approve the ordinances, waive or not waive the final two readings and approve or not approve of emergency language. If the ordinances are approved, they will go into effect 45 days after adoption. If there is, if there is an emergency clause, the ordinances would go into effect immediately. Ordinance 2020-6, ordinance 2020-7 and ordinance 2020-8 are recommended for council's adoption. And that concludes my report.
Hey, are there questions or comments? I do have a comment, but I'll hold, hold off on mine until anyone else has a question or comment. Ray?
I've got a few questions. Um, I was not able to attend all the law committee meetings. And so maybe, uh, Richie can help me out with some of this. Um, so on, um, ordinance 2020-6, um, paragraph 154 point 14, I guess, uh, point one having to do with chain link fences. Um, did the law committee consider allowing chain link fences that would be in good repair? For example, no rust.
The chain link, the law committee was in favor of chain link fencing. It was the Board of Zoning Appeals that one of the chain link fences removed.
And so we have the opportunity to modify this, don't we, Rich? If we, if council so, so chooses?
I believe so, yes. Scott? I'm not certain how that works procedurally.
I mean, definitely you, the council has the authority to, to amend. Probably the best time to do that will be after we hold a public hearing. And the process to amend would be, would be there be a motion to amend before you adopt it. So you could, you could make a motion to amend, uh, that, and that is not, you know, that is something we can do without sending it back to the planning commission.
So, so in this particular case, and I may have a few other related things. Um, can we ask Mr. McDonald to create language that would? Obviously, we need to vote on it, but this way we would have the appropriate language at the third reading.
But in this particular case, Ray, the only thing that, there is no additional language. All it is, is eliminating chain link fences from, from something that's not allowed.
Well, what I was, well, what I was recommending was to allow chain link fences that are in good repair as opposed to just blanket chain link fences. Because this could address, you know, people of chain link fences that are rusted and, and, and all that. So at least if we have some language that would, um, narrow its acceptance as opposed to blanket, blanket acceptance.
I believe any existing chain link fence is also grandfathered. I mean, any new ones can't be constructed. It's my understanding of how this would work in the future. Anyone, please correct me if I'm wrong on that, but I believe that's how this is going to work.
Can I ask a question in that regard? Is it, is a rusty fence enforceable? Like if somebody hypothetically, we keep chain link fences and we add that they must be in good repair. Do we literally have the authority to get someone to? I mean, is it just like another property maintenance violation? Or, I mean, it seems bigger than just demanding that we, you cut your grass or?
They have, having owned a chain link fence, I think they have one of two options. They can either put, they, they sell paint for chain link fencing and it makes it look like new. It's just like a silver paint. Or they have to replace that section. Uh, they, I don't know what else we could do in terms of enforcement.
Well, as the village has a very large chain link fence, well, it partly fell down in the storm, but we have not done anything to mitigate the condition of our unsightly fence because of the cost. So I'm just questioning whether making the requirement that it must be in good repair, if it's not enforceable, then that's just a question I have. I'm not, I mean, we're having.
But don't we have, I mean, part of, I think, the new code, I mean, this is later on and perhaps another section having to do with homeowners' maintenance, right? They have to remove mildew and peel, repaint the home. So this would be part of, this would be part of that.
But mildew is a health threat. Paint and rust on a fence is, is aesthetic.
But we also enforce, if you have chipped paint on your house, we also go out there and, and send out letters and have that fixed as well. So I don't see a problem in making good repair.
No, I'm on the land development committee and honestly, like you said, Rich, we've been working on this since 2018. So I don't have any specific recollection of the land development committee saying, yes, we want chain link fences. But I know that we talked about many things that created unsightly, um, things in people's, a, a, around people's homes, including above ground pools and what?
Do you mean the law committee or the land development committee?
The law committee, I'm sorry, the law committee. I know that we talked about a lot of things that are unsightly, above ground pools being one. And, um, I mean, are we really already just telling our law director to rewrite something that the, um, planning commission has? You know, they hear these cases and, and I would agree, I would, if someone was putting up a new fence, I wouldn't want to encourage them to put up a chain link fence. I think like what it says here, they would rather, we'd rather them have no fence at, at all. That would be the preference of our beautiful business.
Someone wants to install it. It's supposed to.
I'm sorry, I was still talking.
I'm sorry, sorry about that.
Raised my hand a lot. But, uh, you know, I, I think it's a little premature to be assuming that we're going to take a vote in order to allow chain link fences.
Okay, but Ray, before you say anything, I'd note that Alita has a, a hand up.
Uh, yeah, thank you. I was just gonna respond the same thing. I think, I think actually I'm, in our last law committee meeting, we started down this conversation and, you know, I think there are other, this, this may be a discussion that isn't binary, yes or no. So, um, I don't know if that means that it's something that is appropriate to send back to a committee or to have this conversation as, as the mayor mentioned after we, um, after we have the public hearing. I think it probably is because of just procedurally, I don't want to get too deep in it. But one of the things that I know, I remember was brought up in the law committee was, you know, part of the issue is the visibility from the front yard. That's one of the complaints I know that I've heard in the village is it's a, a fence, a, a chain link fence that's basically in the front yard, parallel to the house. No one cares if it's in the, you know, on the side or in the rear. So in other words, it doesn't matter what the answer to that is, one way or another. The answer is it may not be binary, either it's, we allow it or we don't. I think there's some discussion that to have and it would be interesting to hear from, um, from Wes and to hear from our residents about this issue before I think we make a decision about it.
Okay, thank you. Um, and, and one, one comment that I would make at this point, I think it's important that we get input from all the council. My personal opinion is that with respect to a public hearing and so forth, is that we should, the public hearing has to be on what I would call a normal basis. We cannot expect all of our residents to give input via a Zoom meeting. Uh, so if we are not back, my personal opinion is if we are not back in a normal, uh, meeting sense on May 11th, the, um, the public meeting should, should not be held, uh, and that we should defer that until we are able to hold this in a proper setting. Uh, because I think public input on all three of these things is critical. Any comments on that?
I agree.
I don't. I don't, go ahead, sorry.
Popular way of doing things.
I don't disagree, but I don't think we know how long we're going to be in this abnormal. So I'm not willing to say, uh, in three months, if we're still meeting by Zoom, we might need to think up some other method of getting input or something, just, but I hear you. I agree.
I mean, I, I agree with that, but it, as was noted, we've, we've been working on this a long time. If we, if we allow it to drag on a little bit longer, I don't think.
I agree, the input is very important.
I had a, I had a couple other questions regarding this, um, just to move on. So in, in the same, um, in the same ordinance to 20, uh, 2020-6, um, having to do with the vegetable garden fence and the chicken fence, it's really the same comment. So right now we have a clause in there that says, and shall not be visible from the street. So was there, um, uh, consideration? I know I had sent some notes to the law committee. Was there consideration for corner lots or just to create language that these, um, uh, uh, these plots should be in the backyard? Um, just to remove the language not visible from the street? Cause if you're in a small lot, I mean, some of these might be visible from the street, but they're in their backyard. Or if it's a corner lot, chances are they'll be visitor, visible from the street, but they're in their backyard. So it seems like, um.
They can request a variance.
I'm sorry?
They can, that's a case by case analysis by the zoning committee. They can request a variance, depends on how dramatic it is, I'm sure.
Well, going before the, the zoning commit, commission is not always the easiest thing to do. Uh, so I, I would, I, I think it would be easier just to create the best language now instead of trying to make exceptions later. This way it, it deals with all the properties in, in the village. Just a, uh, just my, my comments on that. Um, next question, um, this has to do with above ground pools. Um, Ken, I wasn't able to attend all these law committee meetings. And, um, was there consideration to allow above ground pools so long as they were properly maintained? So for example, not rusted or anything like that? And also are there ordinances, are there other communities in Hamilton County that forbid above ground pools? I guess this question is to Kevin.
I don't know. I thought, uh, prior to me becoming involved in this, that there were, uh, members of the law committee who looked into that. That was my understanding, is that correct?
So I would, I would, I would just ask maybe, you know, the next time we have this conversation, if you could bring some information in terms of other, other municipalities that forbid above ground pools?
The answer is yes, for sure. But we can, I mean, I think we should do that, but yes, we looked into this a long time ago, yes.
Um, and certainly in terms of property values, uh, you know, I don't, I don't think above ground pools necessarily affect property values or attractiveness of a property. Frankly, in-ground pools may be more, um, restrictive in that context, but we can have another conversation about that. Um, and the last thing has to do with, um, this is, uh, ordinance 2020-8, the line having to do with no toys, recreational sports equipment. Would this include, um, and I see this throughout the village. Uh, people have tire swings on their front tree or, uh, baby swings on their front tree. I assume those would now, uh, be against the law. Is that correct?
Rich or Scott?
No toys, recreational sports equipment may be located in the front yard.
That is not a change, that's in the existing code.
Fine, that, that's fine, but I'm just saying existing code, that is now illegal, is that correct?
I wouldn't classify it as illegal, but our property maintenance code designates that toys, recreation and sports equipment should not be in the front yard.
Well, I'm saying it's illegal insofar as there could be a penalty.
There could be, but this is a property maintenance code. So the intent is to try to make sure that property values stay up. And just like council member Bardak talked about the objectives of the property maintenance code, that's what we're trying to hit upon. It's not trying to, it's not a gotcha type of, uh, uh, property maintenance code where we're trying to penalize residents for various, uh, issues.
If I have, if I, if I have a complaint because I see my neighbor having a tire swing on his front tree, okay, that complaint will be followed up, won't it?
That complaint would be accepted and we would look into it and determine if that was something that the village should pursue against that particular property owner.
Property. It makes it kind of arbitrary then, doesn't it?
Pardon?
Doesn't it make it kind of arbitrary?
The property maintenance code is not a black and white code. The enforcement of it is, uh, has, is where common sense comes in, uh, for something like this. This is not like a, um, um, a law for the police department would enforce or other, other items. The property maintenance code is, it does have, uh, some discretion within it because of the common sense aspect.
Thank you. Okay.
Okay, other questions or comments? If not, uh, Scott, I mean, Rich said that call a public hearing for May 11th. I assume you will do that.
Well, we will, if you're wanting to set the public hearing tonight, we'll just go ahead and have a motion to set that public hearing as council member Bardak proposed. If you're, if you're okay with that, if not, we would set it for the June meeting.
Well, I mean, I think given, here's my personal opinion. I think given the likelihood that we will be, um, in council chambers on May 11th being relatively low, I think we, my personal opinion is we ought to set it for June, uh, hoping that we will be in council chambers. And if we're not, then we can just plan on, um, deferring it. But again, that's my personal opinion. I'm looking for input from other council members.
If I could just add to that, that is an option to set the public hearing for, for June the 8th, which would be our council meeting in June. The other option would be to go ahead and set the public hearing for May 11th. You could hold the public he, public hearing even though we are in the Zoom meeting. Right? And then you could continue that public hearing till the June 8th. But it really is up to council what your preference is.
I, I, I will make a motion. I move that we set the public hearing for June 8th. Okay. Okay, it has been moved in second that we set the public hearing, uh, with respect to ordinance 2000 or 2020-6 for June 8th. Are there any questions or comments?
Can I ask a question?
Of course you can.
Scott, what did you mean by we could continue it? You mean we could have it into parts or continue it as in postpone?
This would be a continuation. So you would open the public hearing at your, at your May 11th meeting and you would continue it until June the 8th meeting. So it would just be a continuation of the public hearing. You're not closing the input from residents at that point in time. It would be, still be open at the next council meeting in June.
I prefer that. How do, I mean, I, do I just not vote for Tom's move? How do we do this?
Well, no, I mean, you can, I mean, we could, I mean, we have to deal with the motion on the table. Uh, so you could, you could vote no. But my only reason for wanting to do it this way is I want to be clear. But my only reason for wanting to do it this way is, I want to be clear with our residents, and I think it's also very consistent with what the Attorney General said when they, they put in the proviso that we can do remote meetings like this. The Attorney General was very clear that we should not be taking this opportunity to, and I, and I know no one has the intent to do this, but there can be the perception that, that we're trying to rush things through.
But if we have two opportunities instead of one, with the, the publicity value of people hearing people talking about it, even on Zoom in May, would then actually raise the profile of the issue, rather than waiting for two months to hear from people. I mean, it's, it's perhaps six of one, half dozen of the other, but I just, I mean, it's been over a year and a half that this has been under discussion, it seems like we, we work on it, then we set it aside, and then everybody has to kind of re-acquaint themselves with the issue, and people forget the rationale of why things were done in the first place, and we end up rediscussing and rediscussing. I would like to see some continuity, so that's my private, I mean, that's my personal position here.
Okay, again, my only concern is that, that again, if we announce it as May 11th, and you know, when it becomes clear on, on, at the end of, end of April, that it's going to be a Zoom meeting, you know, residents aren't aware that, that we're intending to continue it. All they know, all they see is that we've announced a public hearing that's going to be on Zoom. Whereas, you know, as we sit here today, you know, I, I just feel like, you know, it's almost for sure that, you know, we're going to be on Zoom in, in May 11th, and I, I don't want to have that perception that we're trying to rush anything through.
Clearly, we disagree.
So, Tom, my understanding is, if this vote, if this measure passes, it means we're postponing this to June, if it's defeated, the default is May?
No, no, we would have to have, we would have to have a separate motion setting the public hearing for May. So the motion on the table.
Natalie wants to speak.
Oh, okay.
And my hand is raised.
I'm sorry.
Look, I don't know whether, honestly, whether May on Zoom is better Peg's way or Tom's way in person. What I'm thinking is that so many of the things that are being proposed in this code are construction, things that people are wanting to think about now, like, am I, how high a fence can I put around the garden that I'm planting now? Where should I plant my garden? I want to put a new fence in now. I want to put a new pool in before this, the summer, and I may want to put in an above-ground pool, because council is going to make them a no after that, so would I be grandfathered? I, I'm just concerned that we've been talking about this since 2018, and now, you know, now we're on the cusp of, this is the time, this is, people have time, the only people who, you know, construction workers are considered essential, and I see a lot of construction happening. So I, I'm just, I just want to express my concern about, these things could, could happen, and what are we going to do? What are we going to do if someone right now puts in an above-ground pool, and you know, in a couple months, we're going to say those are a no?
But nothing takes effect for 45 days after the ordinance passes, right?
Yeah, I, I think that after all this time, Ray, I'm just frustrated with the timing, because.
But even if we go for May.
That's all.
Even if we go for May, that takes us to July when it takes effect, or, or August. If people are going to put above-ground pool, they'll be doing it now.
Yeah, they will.
So it doesn't, it doesn't really make any difference.
No, it doesn't, but I mean, I'm frustrated with the length of time that is taken to even get this on the table, that's all, that's, that's all.
But ordinances are serious things that really require public comment.
Okay, it is, the motion on the table is to set the public hearing for June 8th. Seeing no other questions or comments, please call the roll with respect to that motion.
Richard Bardak?
No, I'd rather have it in May.
Hey Conway?
No.
Ed Hattonback?
Yes.
Alita Kamine?
Yes.
Tom Muthing?
Yes.
Ray Warren?
Oh, boy.
Who knew?
I'll go yes.
Natalie Wolf?
I'll say no, I think we should have it as early as we can.
Okay, so the, it's four yes, three no. That is not something, setting a public hearing is not something that needs a supermajority, so the public hearing is hereby set for June 8th.
Don't start on that pool.
And Rich, I assume that concludes the.
That concludes my report, yes.
Okay, we'll now move on to the compensation.
I was thinking about a chain link fence.
All the compensation and benefits, you all know how I feel about above-ground pools, I've been very vocally opposed to them for two years now, so. The Compensation and Benefits Committee, first of all, I just want to mention that we met on March 17th, we were the last meeting in council chambers, we observed really, really good social distancing, so it can be done in person in council chambers, we're, we're the committee that can be the testament to that. That meeting, we didn't do anything substantive, we met to review, we had a presentation, an interesting presentation from, I'm trying to pull up my notes here, from our folks at Jefferson Health Plan and Haran, regarding, they gave us a little bit of a preview about the year's performance with our local government fund, our local government health pool, which probably is all entirely moot at this point in time, given that that was sort of right before all of the current pandemic stuff started happening. But they, really, the purpose of the meeting was to learn more about how they calculate the reserves, and how they make the decisions about the reserves that they keep and the annual increases. And it was a very informative meeting, but if you're particularly interested in this, that our meeting that comes, I think, in July or August for our renewal plan year, and where they give kind of an update of your end, you're welcome to join us for that, and we will be happy to, to see you all then. The purpose of today's discussion, very excitingly, is today we get to do a third reading, no emergencies, and, and no, no three readings on this, or three readings, three readings on this and no emergencies. Just to kind of, I know my colleagues have heard me talking about this for a really, really long time, but I want to just, you know, for the, in case folks are watching, this is a really exciting part of what the Compensation and Benefits Committee does. You heard earlier about the things that we do around the compensation of our employees, and how important that is, as well as the health, the healthcare component. But we also, and I feel very strongly about this, and our committee does, that we have a couple of things, we, we have a workforce that is, very many of our senior leadership and many others are within about five years of retirement, and we also have a unique workforce that we all love and are very grateful for, and we're going to hear and share from staff about all the amazing things that they've been doing. But it's very, you know, among other things, we have this unique situation where it's very expensive to onboard employees, to send them through fire training, and it is, the retention of our employees, we take very seriously, as well as this kind of slightly newer goal about really focusing on attraction and, and what we're doing to do that. Scott has had to hire two employees this year, and, and you know, as I mentioned, we expect more of this coming. So what we're really, we really are intent and look very carefully at benefits, including, by the way, the, the thing that was mentioned earlier, it was not the first time we have heard from our employees about the issue of longevity pay, we've been hearing about that in this committee for a long time, as one of the benefits that, among the other benefits that we look at and take very seriously, in terms of how we compare to other communities, how the morale of our employees is in terms of their compensation and their benefits, because we need, we want to be a competitive community, and we want to also make sure that we retain the employees that we have, it's critical and very important to us, and keep the culture that everybody knows and loves. So with that said, this particular ordinance came from an issue that got a call about a year ago, asking about our parental leave policy, hot in the news over the last couple of years, and certainly, the private sector is far ahead of the public sector in this, although some states and larger governments are moving toward even paid parental leave, and expect that this will continue to be something that will happen over, over the next many years. But our municipalities and municipalities like ours are structured differently, and, and so we have a slightly different situation, but we do, we did have an ordinance on the book, Scott and I opened the book, we looked at the ordinance, and it was like, I mean, it's, it's very archaic, it's very, it was, it was very archaic in how it was drafted, and a bit offensive if you really looked at it on its face. So what we, what we determined was, what I asked our solicitor for, was an update, and really what we're voting on today, at its core, is really a language update to bring our language of our administrative code into the 21st century. Instead of having parental leave be defined as maternity leave, which only applies to women when they give birth, it expands the definition of who is eligible for this, to include, well, first of all, the circumstances being not just birth, but also surrogacy and adoption, as well as expanding it to all of our employees who, sort of like, you know, fathers and guardians and other, other similar situations, so it doesn't have to be a very kind of, very specific situation. That is all that's changing in the language. One of the unique features of this particular section of the code is that unlike our other benefits, this is a little bit wonky, but unlike our other leave sections and benefits, we, you can pull as an employee from any pool that you have accrued, so your sick time, your vacation time, you can cobble together, and so the leave, this now extends to that new definition of the class of people, six weeks of unpaid leave, but we have these pools that many and most of our employees accrue, so that they can take advantage of, of some of that time being paid if they're lucky enough to have that circumstance. One of the things that, that I kind of mentioned in the committee and a couple of times here, you know, we, one of the things that we have to take into account when we talk about our benefits, and this is something, we, this is a benefit, this is a benefit that we want to be competitive, we want to be modern, we want to be able to attract and retain our talent by offering, you know, the, the beginning of, you know, we, this is not 16 weeks paid, unfortunately, like, like many of our private sector counterparts, but, but this is, this is, puts us in a much better position. One of the things, like I said, I mentioned, is that because we are a small municipality, we have fewer than 50 employees, we are not FMLA, an FMLA employer. So even some of our counterparts in other communities have, have the benefit, if you, you know, theoretically, there are a lot of benefits to working in a small department, I think, you know, I'm biased, but the benefit of federal law that protects in family leave circumstances, 12 weeks of unpaid leave that is guaranteed by federal law, and so we are just, this is, we're just trying to play catch-up even to that. So it is, that was another impetus here, was trying to codify some of the things that are already, I mean, it's, it's less than FMLA, but it's still a lot for us. And of course, I wanted to mention that we did ask questions about what the financial impact and benefit, financial impact would be, and it's very hard to calculate, because it really depends on how much, how much time people take. Not everybody takes six weeks because they have it, some people take less, some people use their paid time that they would be using anyway, they might take a two-week vacation anyway, this year, they're just going to take two weeks for something different, so it's really hard to calculate what that is, how many people this is going to impact every year, it could vary wildly year to year, and over the long term, but the reality is, is that the only expense to the village is whatever, and so really only in, probably in the Police and Fire Department, in what kind of overtime might end up being a situation, or, you know, potentially overtime, or, or some substitute, if somebody, I guess if, you know, if a village manager left us for six weeks or something like that, that we, you know, might have to make alternative arrangements, so those kinds of things, but it's not, this is not, this is a nominal cost to the village. And finally, I just kind of want to, you know, mention that what we're doing today, what I think we're doing today, hopefully with the support of, of council, is saying loud and clear that we support family leave policies. Again, this is not the most aggressive family leave policy in the whole world, but it's a really important subject matter and issue to support, and I hope that we will continue to support this, perhaps we'll be able even to do it more aggressively in the future, and that we want to remove all the barriers that we possibly can to attracting and retaining talent in this community. It is critically important to our success, it's why people live in this village, is because of the services that we provide, and, and we take that very seriously in this, on this committee. I, I personally feel very committed to that, and so this is just sort of a small piece of that. So today, I'm inviting my colleagues to hopefully support our ordinance 2020 dash one, we don't have to do anything other than actually call for a motion, just a motion to approve, because we don't have to do any of those other pieces, but this is, so I, I would like to move that we pass ordinance 2020 dash one, authorizing a change to the parental leave policy in our administrative code.
Second?
Okay, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt ordinance 2020 dash one, which amends the changes to the parental leave policy. Are there any questions or comments?
We got one.
Okay, Ray?
Yeah, I think this is a great idea, Alita, thank you for moving this forward. I do have one question, and that is, I mean, you talk about attracting and retaining, my understanding is, we have not really, we have not had a problem attracting people to be here, or for that matter, retain them. You know, we, our system is like a pyramid, pyramid system, there's one police chief, there's one village manager, and one, there's one head of maintenance. So if someone, if someone wants to stay here, we certainly embrace them, but certainly, if they want to go on to something else, for something better, we certainly don't prevent them from doing that. So I think, I think you may, you may want to reconsider the words about attracting and retaining, because my understanding, these 10 years I've been here, we haven't had a problem, you know, attracting folks, and it's one of the reasons why we get such high caliber people.
I mean, Ray, that, I appreciate that comment, but it's, you know, we don't know that, we, I don't think we can know that, and you don't know who is not choosing us because they're looking at a list of benefits that appeals to them personally, and so I'm just, I mean, I don't. I also think.
Apply for a job, that's how.
We also, we also are, you know, we've had openings over that period of time, but as I mentioned, we expect that in the next five to seven years, we're going to have more job openings, likely in more senior positions even in our community, but than we have had in the past five to seven years, and so we're looking ahead, putting ourselves in the best possible position that we can, to have the most competitive benefits that we can afford, because we cannot afford to be number one in pay, we can't compete to be the top paying jurisdiction in the county, we just, we just have to be realistic about that. So that's why we look at the whole suite of benefits, because I don't think we can answer, I mean, I appreciate what you're saying, but I don't think we can answer that question, I don't think we can know who didn't apply or isn't applying.
Something else, Cole.
Hey.
Okay, Peg, I see you have an eight, hand up. Peg, you have a question?
Well, I want to comment on this issue, in addition to Alita amid the back and forth. Are you guys done? I mean, I just want to add to what Alita's saying, in that we cannot assume, we cannot rest on laurels, the role of a law enforcement officer particularly has changed a great deal, the kind of work that they are doing here in the village, this is what we hear about over and over again in our police-fire meetings. One of the things that we were told is that they are aware that some other jurisdictions, namely Indian Hill, are hiring people mid-career, with full recognition of all their service elsewhere. So things are more competitive to get the high-quality people, and maybe there are, I mean, it, it's a tough market out there, and we cannot assume that everyone's going to beat down the doors to work here, and that is actually part of the reason we, we felt like we wanted to go ahead and restore the longevity pay, is it's something that we could do with not a huge financial impact on the village, in the recognition that we cannot afford to be the highest, we cannot afford to be the high, in the top tier of pay, as we once were. So I, I think. So I, I think attract and retain is very important, and we have had turnover in my tenure on council. There was a period after the benefit, after the financial crisis, in the resolution of that, there was some turnover. And that's not a bad thing. I'm, I'm not here to say that I think turnover is always bad, but I just think we need to be, as Alita has alluded, I support her vision of holistically looking at the benefits in, with an eye on attracting and retaining employees.
Okay, Alita, you have a hand up?
Yeah, I just want to, again, I'm, I'm not an expert on this, and perhaps the Police and Fire Committee or the police can, you know, mention this, but to Peg's point, I think, I mentioned this in my comments, but it is quite costly to hire somebody who we have to train as, put through a fire academy and then have them use us to shop around to other jurisdictions too. I mean, putting ourselves in a position where we're not trying to force people to spend their careers here or, you know, if they don't want to be here, we certainly don't want to do that. But we're, we want high morale and we want to have return on our investment in a competitive environment and make sure that we're doing everything we can. And frankly, I don't think candidly that what we're passing today is necessarily going to make a huge difference, but it definitely makes a difference if you're looking at this, if you're, I mean, personally, for somebody in my age demographic and, and all of the things, if I saw that some jurisdiction, for example, Cincinnati offers two weeks paid leave now for parental leave for everybody. If I had to pick between Cincinnati and a jurisdiction that didn't have it, for somebody like me, that might be the difference between choosing that job or not. So it's just part of, part and parcel of, of making sure that we're doing everything that we can to put ourselves in the best possible position.
Okay, if, Alita and Peg, could you lower your hand?
Oh, you can't do, okay. Got it.
Okay. Are there any other questions or comments? If not, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt ordinance 2020-1. Please call the roll.
Richard Bardock.
Yes.
Peg Conway.
Yes.
Ed Hattonback.
Yes.
Alita Kaymine.
Yes.
Tom Muthing.
Yes.
Ray Warren.
Yes.
Natalie Wolf.
Yes.
And that concludes my report.
Okay. So we will now move on to the managers' report.
Thank you, Mayor. I had three items I wanted to cover in the managers' report. I want to talk about the COVID-19 and what the village has done to prepare for that. The second item is the storm that occurred last week. And then the third item to end with on a more positive note would be the census. So in regards to the COVID-19, there was certainly a significant amount of anticipation as we approached about a week after our council meeting, actually on March 23rd, is when things started falling into place for us in regards to the, to the pandemic. Probably the most significant from a, from a staffing standpoint was to begin to shift away from maintenance personnel and moving those folks to the fire personnel. So as you know, they are one and the same in our organization here. So it's easy to do that, but we did that in anticipation so that we could encounter or handle any kind of emergency that we might be facing with the, with the COVID-19. So that was our initial move, and that meant that maintenance workers were moving into a 12-hour shift and that we also split them up. So they're no longer working together, so they are broken into different shifts. So in the event that the COVID-19 did start impacting our employees, we would be able to continue services for the residents. We felt like that was a very prudent move on our part to, to enact that. So having that in place really allowed us to move forward with the, with planning. And all that was moved under Chief Rich Wallace. So he has been the one who's been instrumental in guiding the fire department as maintenance has joined with, with, with the police and created that fire crew. So away from that, the village began communicating to residents, primarily letting them know what was occurring and how the village was being affected. You probably are familiar that we, I recorded a message and provided that to the residents. So that was a pre, that was a recorded message, video message that went out to residents. That was made available to the residents also on our website as well as in the special e-news. We also delivered a CallSafe message that went to all residents who are registered with CallSafe and other means of communicating with residents if they're not getting our electronic media. And then we followed that up with a special edition of, of an e-news, e-newsletter. And the purpose of that was to put in black and white what was occurring at that time on March 23rd. And while it seems like we've been doing this for months, it's not that long ago in terms of what we've been, what we're dealing with. But we felt like it was important to do a couple of things. One, to let residents know how to contact the village because the municipal building was closing to the, to the public. Felt like it was important to let them know about our tax information. And at that time, the tax due date was still April 15th. So we were getting calls on that. It had not been changed as of that point. We also let them know what was occurring at the, at the state level with some items. And then when we moved out, away from that, on March 24th, a letter from the chief was released in letting folks know how we would be enforcing the governor's stay-at-home order. So obviously that was important to us to communicate to our residents what, what they might be experiencing here in the, in the village. And as the days went on, it was, it appeared as though it was just constantly some changes. And so we were trying to adapt to those changes. And I think the organization did a good job of taking each of those scenarios and moving them forward because we did follow up with another special e-news, letting residents know what was going on, certainly mentioning how to get ahold of folks directly within our organization because we had closed by that point, giving them resources about the coronavirus since that was hot and heavy at, at that time, trying to gain more knowledge about this. And then ultimately, Mayor Muthing was asked to declare a state of emergency, and he did sign an emergency proclamation that was recommended to us by the Emergency Management Agency of Hamilton County. And I would just like to add that the whole process of, of this COVID-19 evolving from a, from a public side has been led by Commissioner Dreehouse, and she has brought in the interim health director as well as the director of Emergency Management Agency and also the county, county administrator, and putting all of us, leading us through this particular process because there are certain things that needed to be done, the proclamation needed to be approved by, by the mayor, and filling out other documents and preparing us for what could be the, a worst case scenario. From that point, as we got into the beginning of April, we've encouraged residents to continue connecting with us. If they are not currently signed up with an electronic format, it would be very helpful if they, if they do that because that's a quicker way for us to communicate with them. And then we followed that up with another edition of the e-newsletter. So once again, trying to put the emphasis on communicating with the residents about what is unfolding with the COVID-19 and how, for example, how these meetings are going to be held. The state legislature and the governor signed off on approving our ability to conduct public business in this manner. So we felt like that was an important aspect to let residents know because it was going to start creating issues for us because the business of the village needs to continue. So we needed to, need to be able to meet in this particular format. Probably the big item there is brush pickup, and I know we've gone back and forth with brush pickup. When we entered into the COVID-19 emergency, it was our distinct plan to not pick up brush because we did not consider brush pickup to be an essential service. We know it's essential to all of our residents, but from an emergency standpoint, it does not rank as high as police and fire issues. So we pulled back on, on the brush collection, and as you witnessed, residents continued to put brush out. And so we did go out and pick up brush. And so it's sort of been a difficult matter, but we are still in that mode. At that time, we were still in the mode of encouraging residents not to put brush out as we were focused on preparing for the COVID-19 pandemic. The other item that we communicated to residents in that special e-news was the extension of the tax due date for Amberly residents. So the state legislature is the one that holds the key to the village and our due date for taxes. So when the state legislature took action for allowing remote type meetings like we're, we're experiencing tonight, part of that action they also approved was filing by 90 days, moving it from April 15th to July 15th. So that moves the state's filing deadline, it moves the Amberly villages, and obviously the federal government had already done that. So that was another specific ask was to make sure that we communicated that to, to our residents. As, as the stay-at-home order issued, the stay-at-home order was issued and continued on, we continued to add information. We are now working on a special print newsletter that will go to our residents because what we've experienced is that for some of those residents who do not have the electronic means of, of engaging with us, they are not familiar, they're not familiar with what is going on in the village. So quickly, Tammy Reisner, our clerk of council and the assistant to the manager, is putting together a print newsletter that we'll be able to get out by the end of this week so that we can communicate in black and white to all residents what has occurred up, up to this point and make them aware of where we believe we are, we are headed. The, obviously we've been communicating with our employees about this issue because that's very germane to, to us as well as to, to them. So that's taken a significant, significant amount of time and discussion for, for that matter. And then the, the aspect that has not been undertaken yet, I've got it done, it has begun, but I've just not gotten involved with it yet. And that is the, to focus on our fiscal responsibility. So we obviously know that this particular pandemic is going to have an impact on us, but we want to identify the resources so that we can maintain those essential services for our residents. But we will not be immune from some difficult decisions, but as this unfolds, that's when we'll be able to make better assumptions and get a handle on the, on the situation and look at all aspects of our funding to see how we are going to be impacted, impacted by this. So that really is the, is synopsis, a quick synopsis of what has occurred since our last council meeting as it relates to COVID-19. So what really set us off was last Wednesday night on Passover, the village experienced a, a pretty significant storm that did damage within the, within the village. That particular storm was pretty, well, it started in the mid-part of the village and went south. So that was, that was the area of the village that was affected the most. But we certainly have had a significant number of, of trees down, electric lines that were down, residents were with, without power as those April 8 storms ripped through the, through the village. We have, I wanted to share some pictures with you, so I want to share a screen so I can just, because of, with the stay-at-home order, I'm assuming that most of you probably are now, not out driving the village, but there certainly are some areas of the village that I think you might find beneficial to see. So if you'll just give me a second to pull this up. Can you see a picture there?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So the, I, I have about 10 photos here. I just wanted to give you an idea of what, what's going on. So this was actually, obviously at night since it's dark and represents that we were on Fair Oaks. So we, excuse me, Fair Acres, we were on Fair Acres. And we were called there because there was a tree completely covering the street. So residents could not act, get outside of their homes out onto, out onto Ridge Road. So this is on Fair Acres. We also went, we were spinning in, even though this was in the middle of the night, we were chipping. Can you see the chipper operation there?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So we were out chipping, and this is in the middle of the night, so I'm sure residents did not receive much in, in terms of sleep that evening because it was pretty, pretty loud. So the, the chipping operations began, whoops, and that continued. And I just wanted to give you what it looked like during the daytime. So this is the same location during the daytime. The next day, maintenance department went back. So we've got an operator in the backhoe and we've got our foreman who is cutting up brush while it's being raised so it can be loaded onto a, a pickup truck. This is looking at the other end of that same tree that they're working on. So this was an uprooted tree. Obviously, it's pretty, pretty significant and it is not a pine or an evergreen type tree. So a significant amount of damage was done when this particular tree came and crossed over Fair Acres. So this, this picture here is of a tree on Winding Way. And there were actually, there's actually two trees there that were close to each other and they both came down and, and blocked Winding Way and also pulled down, they were leaning on the wires. So you can't see the wires here, but the, this kept, obviously kept Winding Way closed for a period of time and took out electric as well. The next slide you see is probably the house that was, received the most damage in the storm from last week. So this would be a home that was located on Elbrook. And this is a picture taken from the back of the home, and this is the tree that landed on the roof of the, of the home, smashing the chimney, smashing the window, obviously doing a significant amount of roof damage. But probably the most significant part is the inside of this home. This is the bedroom where the kids would have normally been sleeping, but this is where the tree hit the house. And so you can see the amount of debris that is, that is in this particular room from, from that, from that tree hitting the roof. So we were spared life as well as serious injuries because the kids were not in that particular room at the time. This is a view of, we're standing on Oak Ridge. Obviously, the chief is there surveying the damage and we're looking to the south on Meadow, Meadow Brook. So looking south towards Willow Brook. This is Meadow Brook that, that we're looking straight down. Meadow Brook suffered probably the most damage from an electrical standpoint. The, this is a transformer that ended up in the street and stayed there for quite some time. And then you can just see how the holes were snapped into. It really was a devastating area. Obviously, they're without, they were without electric for the greatest period of time. And it required Duke to do a significant amount of work to undo this mess and then get additional, or get new wiring up so that the residents could have electric. And so that was restored this past Saturday night. And this was the tree that was blocking Meadow Brook. So even had the electric lines not been in the way, residents were not going to be able to travel this street because of the large tree laying across the street. And then I mentioned earlier that it started in the mid-part of the, of the village. This is a, a home on Burning Tree. Just gives you an idea of the amount of damage that the winds did on major pine trees that, that surround that, that particular house. So these are just a few of the, of the pictures that I wanted to share with you just to give you a sense of what kind of damage the, the village suffered. And also just to give you an idea how significant it was in terms of the storm for, for our, for our residents. Wanted to also talk a little bit about how great of a job our employees did. So they obviously responded to the call on April the 8th. They worked into the early morning to open the streets and to remove obstructions. They were, they worked all day Thursday, worked Friday, and then Saturday, and they, and they worked late. And this isn't new to them because they're trained to respond in these types of emergencies. And I think that's where our real strength shows in these types of crises because they do an amazing job of working together. So what happened is the police officers joined with maintenance to create crews. And so when you're out, when they're, when you see some of this work occurring, you could well be, it could well be a police officer or a couple of police officers working with a maintenance, maintenance worker. So the village really does come together in these types of situations in order to respond to our residents. I know I certainly value and appreciate the work that the employees are doing, and I know that our residents appreciate. know that our residents appreciate them well. I've heard that from the residents I've been speaking to. As you know, I've not, our office is closed, but I have been at the office for quite a bit of time, and had the opportunity to answer the phones and talk to a few of the residents, and they all take the opportunity to thank us for the work that they do. But I think one of the most, one of the areas I wanted to emphasize is that when the chief and I did a tour of the damaged area, the residents expressed their appreciation there as well. In fact, we had residents who were writing checks to the chief to buy lunch for the employees who had been working, because they had witnessed, you know, the work that they had been doing all night and into those next couple of days. So I think that's quite a testament that residents would write a check to the village to buy the employees lunch. Certainly, the residents heaped quite a few accolades on to our employees for their quick response. And then finally, I want, not only want to thank the employees, but certainly thank Chief Wallace, who took on this additional task to get us ready for the COVID-19 emergency, and then was well-positioned when the storm hit last Wednesday night. So he and his leadership team, I believe, made a Herculean effort to get the neighborhoods cleaned up. These are neighborhoods that we care about, we want to return these back to normal, try to get some normalcy back into the neighborhood, especially on the appearance side. So certainly, a huge thank you to Chief Wallace for taking care of that. And I just want to close with what happened today. So today, the City of Mason sent two chippers and two dump trucks and four employees, maintenance workers, to begin assisting in the cleanup in our most devastated neighborhoods. They worked on Burning Tree, one of the crews worked on Burning Tree, and then another crew worked in the Fair Oaks subdivision. And then the City of Beaver Creek, and you should be familiar with them, because we assisted them last summer when the tornado hit on Memorial Day, they sent two dump trucks and two maintenance workers to come down here and assist us in the cleanup as well. So they returned the favor that we provided to them last summer. And then tomorrow, the City of Mason and Beaver Creek will return again, and then they will be joined by the Village of Merrimott, and then also Sims Township stepping in to help us. And so we certainly appreciate the donation of time by the other communities to help get our village back to what we believe will be normalcy when this is done. So those are the two items I wanted to spend the most time on. The last time I wanted to close on was the 2020 census. Even though we are in the middle of a crisis, we're in the middle of the storm damage cleanup, I just want to remind residents to fill out the census. We're currently about at a 65% self-response rate, which is good, but we want to get that response rate all the way up to the top, because it does make a difference for our village, and it makes a difference for our region. So we want everybody to be counted, and the added benefit here is if you don't want somebody knocking on your door and asking you to fill out the census, get that census form that you received in the mail, or the one that you're going to get in the mail, and get that turned back in so that you're not bothered by the poll workers, and it also saves the federal government money from having to send folks out to knock on our doors. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Are there any questions for the manager? I don't see any hands. Okay, Chief, do you have anything to add?
No, just a couple of things. I sent some messages out to the community just to continue to stress the importance of following the stay-at-home order. With us having technically three parks now, that's created a lot of traffic in the village, so we're positioning our officers to help to save some, any car break-ins and things, since the malls are not there for them to break in. We have charged a couple of people with the violation, the stay-at-home order. As a result, our guys are still out there staying active and making arrests. I think the manager covered everything, except for the exception, you know, I want to thank Lieutenant Bloom, who played a key role in to also organize the maintenance staff and getting everything in line so we can operate this way. That'll be it.
Okay, and the only thing I will mention is to kind of follow up from Scott, is that, you know, I definitely witnessed the response that the Amberly crew made to the storm, and the trucks going up and down section, responding to equipment. It was impressive, just how they got there and got things done. And Scott, I really want to thank you for sending the pictures to council members on an ongoing basis, because, you know, it does help us to understand everything that's going on in the village, and we can stay at home and just look at your pictures. And they, you know, the picture, the picture that kind of summed it up for me, Chief, was the picture in the night in front of that one down tree, I'm not sure which officer was, but that down tree where the root ball was two to three times his height. He wasn't, he wasn't a short guy like me, he seemed to be relatively normal height, so that was very impressive. So again, on behalf of council and the entire village, thanks to everything that your team did, maintenance guys did, it is very impressive. Any new business? If not, we can adjourn our first council Zoom meeting, and Rob, thanks so much for you streaming this, and, you know, hopefully, we learn and get better as we go along.
Thank you very much.